This program is brought to you by Cable Franchise V's and generous donations from viewers like you.
Thank you. Good evening. It is September 13th, 2021. And pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting is being conducted via remote means. Given that we have a quorum of the council present, I am calling the September 13th, 2021 meeting of the Amherst Town Council to order at 6:31. I'll call upon each councillor by name. At that time, they should unmute their mic and say "present." This will indicate that they can hear me and we can hear them. Please remember to mute your mic after saying "present." Shalini Baumill.
Present.
Alyssa Brewer. Alyssa Brewer. Alyssa, can you hear us?
Yes, I can now. Thank you.
Pat De Angelis.
Present.
Darcy Dumont. She has informed me she will probably be absent. Lynn Griesmer is present. Mandy Johanneke.
Present.
Dorothy Pam.
Present.
Evan Ross.
Present.
George Ryan.
Present.
Kathy Shane has informed me she will be absent tonight. Steve Schreiber.
I'm here.
Andy Steinberg.
Present.
And Sarah Schwartz has informed me she will be absent tonight. There is no chat room for this meeting. If there are technical issues, please let Athena and me know. To make a comment or ask a question, please click the raise hand button. If technical difficulties arise as a result of using remote participation, I will decide how to address the situation as it occurs. Discussion may be suspended while we address technical issues and minutes will note if a disconnection occurs. Athena will be monitoring councillors' connections and if necessary, we will pause the meeting until you reconnect. On the screen, you see how to join the meeting and later on, how to make public comment if you are on the phone. Let's move on to the announcements. I just want to note a couple of things that we want to highlight and I'll comment on them later. On October 4th, we will have the tax classification hearing and also a regular meeting of the council. On September 27th, at the top of the list, we will have a primer on the master plan and then a public forum on the master plan and also a regular meeting. Each of the committees of the council are meeting and those are noted here. I would also like at this point to put up another slide regarding voting by mail. And before you try to read this entire slide, while we can include it in the packet, what you really need to do is go onto the town website and just put in "vote by mail" and that will take you to this. The thing I want to point out here is that unlike in the presidential election, where the Secretary of State mailed applications for voting by mail to all registered voters, they are not doing that this time. In order for you to vote by mail, you need to get an application, which you can get on the website for the town. And it's on here. And you have to make sure you mail that application in in order for you to get your ballot. The deadline to apply for that is 5 o'clock PM on October 27th. And the ballots will be ready in about two to three weeks before the election. And please make sure you return your ballot early. If you have any questions about all of this, just contact the town clerk's office. And I'm mentioning this because frankly, I didn't know I had to do this to vote by mail and I wanted to make sure other people weren't caught off guard as well. The other thing I want to mention is we are in the process of having a committee look at the redistricting plan for the town. And this plan will need to be voted on by the end of October by the town council. That is state requirement. The Districting Advisory Committee meets tomorrow at 6 o'clock PM. Their meetings are posted on the town website. And you can join that meeting by Zoom. The council will receive their recommendations prior to our October 18th meeting. And although we have not posted an official meeting on October 25th, I will be polling the council to determine if we have a quorum of the council on the 25th so that we can post this as a special meeting with a special comment period on the districting plan. We are required to have two meetings and because of the late time by which the districting plan, the census data was available, everything is backed up and jammed. Dorothy, you have your hand up.
Yes, because I'm going to have to be able to explain this to people, I have to tell you I don't understand this. So I read through the steps. Does it say, and I missed it, that the ballot will be mailed to me or does it say that you pick it up? I gather that you go online and get an application and you can drop it off or email it.
Right.
Then does it say that the ballot is mailed to you or emailed to you somewhere? Because I don't see it.
It doesn't say that. And let me just mention that we do have the town clerk joining us for a part of our agenda this evening. In fact, it won't be too long from now. And you can ask her that question. Okay?
Because the other one is, I do not know what it means. Applications signed with a mouse, stylus, or finger are acceptable. I would not know how to do any of those. Type signatures are not. I know how to type. So I could be telling people to do this and then they get to it and they find out that they don't know how to make a signature that's acceptable. So I am not happy with this.
Okay.
That's all I'm expressing myself.
Let's make sure we discuss that with the town clerk when she arrives. Alyssa?
Yeah, just following up on that, I appreciate that we'll have that opportunity to talk to her later because it's not true that the Secretary of the Commonwealth sent us actual ballots. They sent us applications for ballots. And so this whole thing is really confusing to people. And so I'm sure that she would be happy to beef this up. But like Dorothy said, we're going to need to beef up the step by step for people to understand. So I'm sure she knows all the answers. It's just a matter of putting them in a written form that we can easily transmit to people. So that'll be great.
And that will mean revising the website because that's where I got this information. So thank you, Alyssa. Are there any other questions at this point on this issue? Okay, then let's move on. We have no hearing tonight. And we will then be moving on to public comment. You can take the consent agenda down. So I need to ask at this time if there is anybody who wishes to make public comment. Please raise your hand. I don't see any hands raised, so I'm going to go on to the consent agenda. Sorry about that. Okay. The following items were selected because they were considered to be routine and it was reasonable to expect they would pass with no controversy. To remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion later in the meeting, ask me that it be removed. This does not require a second. So the motion is as follows. To move the following items and the printed motions thereunder and approve those items as a single unit. Suspension of Town Council Rules of Procedure 8.4 for the following agenda items that merely allows us to vote on those tonight. It does not mean we have approved them. It just means we can vote on them. 8A2, November 2nd, 2021 Town Election Warrant. 8A3, Policy Regarding Electioneering During Early and Absentee Voting for All Elections. 8D, Audit Firm Selection. We are also on the consent agenda, including adoption of the 2021 Puerto Rican Heritage Day Proclamation. 6D, Adoption of the 2021 Indian and Pakistan 75th Independence Day Proclamation. 9A, 1 to 4 is approval of the following town manager appointments. Recreation Director, Elementary School Building Committee. That's a single appointment. African Heritage Reparations Assembly Committee. It is a committee, I'm sorry. And the Community Preservation Act Committee. It's part of the appointments. 11A to E is approval of the following Town Council Meeting Minutes. January 28th, 2021, Special Town Council Meeting Minutes, Joint Meeting with Town Services and Outreach Committee. March 3rd, 2021, Special Town Council Meeting Minutes, Jones Library Public Forum. March 6th, 2021, Special Town Council Meeting Minutes, Jones Library Public Forum. May 21st, 2021, Special Town Council Meeting Minutes. And August 23rd, 2021, Regular Town Council Meeting Minutes. Please raise your hand if there is any item you would like taken off of the consent agenda. Andy?
I'm going to ask a question before I make a request. And the question is, in executive committee minutes, are there any special procedural requirements that the clerk needs to follow for approval of executive session minutes that would require us to not have it on the consent agenda?
These are the open session part of those minutes. They're not the executive session part of those minutes.
Okay, thank you.
And therefore, you're not requesting removal of anything, Andy?
That is correct.
Okay. Mandy Jo?
The approval of the Town Manager Appointments to the African Heritage Reparations Assembly.
Okay, so the consent agenda is as you see it on the screen, except for the African Heritage Reparations Assembly. Are there any other requests for removing an item? Seeing none, then I'm seeking a second.
Second, Ross.
Thank you, Evan. Are there any other questions? If not, we'll proceed to call the roll. Shalini Baumill.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer.
Aye.
Pat De Angelis.
Aye.
Darcy Dumont is absent. Lynn Griesmer's aye. Mandy Johanneke.
Aye.
Dorothy Pam.
Aye.
Evan Ross.
Aye.
George Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane is absent. Steve Schreiber.
Aye.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
And Sarah Schwartz is absent. So it passes unanimously, 10 in favor, none opposed, none abstaining, and 3 absent. Okay. I'd like to go on to the next agenda item, which is where we basically have agreed that we will say a few words about the resolutions that we have just passed. And so let me just say, as the sponsor for the Puerto Rican Heritage Day Proclamation, I remember fondly being out on the town stairs with lots of schoolchildren there. And I regret that we probably won't have as large a gathering this year. However, the final statement of this says, "Now therefore, we the Amherst Town Council officially proclaim September 23rd, 2021 as Puerto Rican Heritage Day and further recognizing this proclamation by raising the Puerto Rican flag from September 3rd to September 29th, 2021, to help cultivate awareness for all residents of Amherst." The next proclamation is the 2021 Indian and Pakistan 75th Independence Day Proclamation. And I'm calling on Shalini Baumill.
Thank you. Yeah, and I just want to quickly thank the town staff and GL Committee for, you know, for supporting this because it is a very important event for people from Pakistan and India. It's a 75th year of independence from British rule. And I thought that, just briefly, to say that in writing the proclamation, my intentions were to make sure that we communicate to the residents from India and Pakistan that we are a town that wants them here, that acknowledges their contributions to our town. And in the process, I have found that it became an important opportunity to engage these residents from these countries to participate in our town. So I already have one person who's interested in, you know, joining one of the committees. So I think community events like this create that opportunity for diverse populations to know what we're doing in town council and to in the committees. So that's awesome. And then secondly, I think it's an opportunity for the people of Amherst to know about the history a little bit and also the arts and cultural events. So there'll be a little bit of music and dance and arts from the two countries that the people of Amherst can enjoy. So do you want me to read the "now therefore"?
Yes.
Okay. "Now therefore be it hereby resolved that we, the Town Council of the Town of Amherst in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, in recognition of the 75th year of independence in Pakistan and India, proclaim September 24th, 2021, as celebration of Indian-Pakistan Day and further recognize the proclamation by raising the Pakistani-National flags from September 24th to September 30th, 2021, to help spread awareness of the history of these two countries and celebrate the many achievements and contributions of the Indian and Pakistani residents in Amherst."
And that event will be celebrated on the 24th at 4 o'clock on the town hall. Okay, and I'll be polling councillors to see who will be there to join in reading of the proclamation. Okay, so we're moving on to, there is no presentation tonight. We have a couple items under action. And we begin with having our town clerk with us, Susan Odette. And we have three items under this, but I know that people also want to discuss the vote by mail. So Sue, let's start with early voting locations, dates, and hours. And I've asked Athena to put the dates and hours up on the screen.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I've altered this from the first meeting to include an evening timeframe for voting in person. In light of the fact that the question was added to the ballot, I feel that there will be more interest in this election. So I'd like to try to, you know, compensate people that may work during the day to give them some extra time to vote in person early. So it will be Monday through Friday from 8:30 to 4 every day, except Thursday. We'll be open until 8:00 PM. And in addition, you know, besides voting in person, we have, of course, voting on Election Day from 7:00 in the morning until 8:00 PM. We have absentee balloting if people qualify so they can vote over the counter in town hall anytime. Oh, I have the deadline in front of me. I think it's the 25th of Oct. No, I think it's the 27th of October. And we also have voting by mail. So that's no excuse voting. And so there are multiple, multiple ways in which people can vote for this coming election.
I'd like to stick to these hours and then come back to the voting by mail because I know there are questions from the council. Are there any questions with regard to these hours as they are presented to you at this time? Alyssa?
We brought up the idea last time of at least one evening and one weekend day. So you're feeling comfortable given the other options as we've discussed and that you just outlined, that we don't need to provide any weekend hours?
I am feeling comfortable with that. And also in the past, we've never offered voting in person for a town election. This is the first time. It's never been offered. It's only been for state elections. So I feel with all the different options that there are available at this time, that this is more than sufficient for different ways in which people can vote.
Okay, are there any other questions on this issue? Okay, then I'm going to read the motion and look for a second. "To hold in-person early voting to be located in the first floor meeting room of Town Hall for the following dates and times. Monday, October 25th, 2021, 8:30 AM to 4:00 PM. Tuesday, October 26th, 2021, 8:30 AM to 4:00 PM. Wednesday, October 27th, 2021, 8:30 to 4:00 PM. 8:30 AM to 4:00 PM. Thursday, October 28th, 2021, 8:30 AM to 8:00 PM. Friday, October 29th, 2021, 8:30 AM to 4:00 PM." Is there a second?
Ryan, second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or question on this particular item? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to begin the roll call vote with Alyssa Brewer.
Aye.
Pat De Angelis.
Aye.
Darcy Dumont is absent. Lynn Griesmer's aye. Mandy Johanneke.
Aye.
Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Evan Ross.
Aye.
George Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane is absent. Steve Schreiber.
Aye.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz is absent. Shalini Baumill.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously for those present. It's 10, 0, 0, and 3 absent. We're going to move to, I've got to pause for a moment, have you take this down, if you will. And I would like to take a moment to have people ask questions of Sue regarding mail-in ballots. There was a slide we showed earlier and it seemed to have some information that was still needed. One of the pieces of information was how to return the application and how to return the ballot. So let's start with Alyssa Brewer.
So yeah, this is fine as an announcement, but we need a step by step because it's different than the only other times we've done it before. And so it needs to be clear to people that they are having to apply for a ballot, meaning they have to fill out an application for a ballot. And what they can do, and Dorothy has questions about how to sign that, how they do that, when that will get turned around back to them, like expect an answer within a week or expect an answer within three days. And then that there will be a gap, more than likely, depending on how early people do this, between the time they do that and then when those ballots are actually ready and when they're mailed out. Because I know we had some concerns raised the last time we had, which again, it's not like we've done this a lot, but when we had mail-in voting, that people said, "Oh, I never actually got my mail-in ballot." And then they went through various steps and they took care of it. But given that this is all being done locally, which seems good actually, that we're not having to interface so much with the secretary on this particular one, I think that just needs to be laid out. You'll fill it out this way. You'll expect to hear back by then. You'll get a ballot by then. Here's how you fill it out. Here's how you can return it. Like you can put it in the Dropbox. You can put it in the mail. You can deliver it in person on the day of. And I think, you know, just to clarify those steps to people, because again, this isn't like somebody who's voted absentee before and they just need a reminder on how to vote absentee. This is a very different thing for people.
Can I speak?
Please.
Okay. I didn't see what was up earlier. I just hopped on a few minutes ago. But what it sounds like is, we already have a spot on the town website, vote by mail. And I think what we can do is expound on all the different things, process step by step by step. There is a deadline. We will have Dropbox. That's in the process of getting installed again. Yeah, all of that. I can even do a timeline, you know, last day of withdrawal, September 30th. Town clerk picks names, October 1st at 9:00 AM. Names go to the vendor for printing. Names come back for proofing, blah, 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 blah. So estimated date of receipt of that. Yeah, so I can do all of that on the vote by mail site. I'll expound. That's fine. What was put up earlier? Could it be put up again?
Sure. It was what is on the town website.
Oh, all right. Okay, okay. Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. Make it a little more clear.
Dorothy, you have a particular question about signatures.
Okay, but am I here? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So just before we get to signatures, you will receive a ballot in the mail. Is that correct?
If someone applies for a mail ballot, they'll receive it in the mail. Yes.
So then the question, the language here was "Applications signed with a mouse, stylus, or finger are acceptable. Type signatures are not."
Correct.
And I have, I'm not able to do any of those three things, nor have I seen what any of that would mean and would consider typing my name. Or some people do their name and like they pick a script or something like that. So whatever, I have not done on my computer, there's a signature feature, which some of you may know much better than I do. So is that also forbidden, the signature feature? How will you do that? It's something you set up ahead of time. This just seems awfully complicated.
This is the thing, is that when you start to get into details, it becomes more complicated. We've never gotten into these details before. Usually it's just, you know, you fill out an application, you sign your name, you send it in. But as more and more options become available through the Secretary of State's office, through the town's website, there are more and more questions. So yeah, we can explain all that as well. I think a lot of people would just download the form, print it up, sign it.
They sign it with their own hand and a pen.
Yes, yes.
Like in real life. Okay.
Yeah.
Or that would be if you took it and then returned it in person or put it in an envelope.
You could do that. And there's options there too.
Can you return it electronically?
Yes, yeah. So we'll expound on that as well. You can take a picture with your phone and email it. Oh, yes.
Okay, okay. Good, thank you. It's a little diagram with the five different ways.
Oh, my gosh. I have to draw a flow chart. Okay.
Flow chart, right. Have Mandy Jo help you.
Oh, good. Thank you.
So one of the other questions was, by what date must you receive or must the ballot be at Town Hall?
Always by the close of polls on election night when it comes to a town election. There is no extended time.
Okay.
Okay.
Are there any other questions at this point on this issue? So once the town clerk does that, it will go up on the town website and we will share it again at our next meeting as well. Okay, so we're going to go on to the next item, which is the November 2nd, 2021 Town Election Warrant. And Athena has that prepared to put up on the screen. It's a lengthy warrant. This is where we actually vote to authorize the warrant for the regular town election on Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021, with polls open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the following locations. And on your screen, you see all of those locations. We had quite a previous discussion about this and I want to just point out that Precinct 2, which used to be at the fire station, is now at the high school. Precinct 4, which used to be at the Bang Center, is now at the high school. And Precinct 10, which used to be at the Bang Center, is now at the high school. And then all of the various positions are also listed there. So I'm not going to go ahead and read each of these unless somebody would like me to do that. So let me start again with the motion. The motion is to authorize the warrant for the regular town election on Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021, with polls open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the following locations and they are listed there. Is there a second?
Pat De Angelis?
I'll let the clerk decide. Are there any other questions on this item? Andy?
Science Reddit, the warrant does not say anything about the other voting methods that we just discussed. Should it be in the warrant since the warrant is how we're notifying the public and the election is taking place?
Sue?
Yeah, no. No, if you look at all past warrants of multiple years back, it only notifies the voters that an election is happening. The ways that you can vote during that election. The ways that you can vote during that election don't get included on a warrant.
So that, for example, your ability to vote absentee, which has been a standard capability for years, is not on the warrant?
No.
Okay. Are there further questions? Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. I'm going to begin the voting with Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Darcy Dumont is absent, Lynn Griesmer is aye, Mandy Johanneke?
Aye.
Dorothy Pam?
Yes.
Evan Ross?
Aye.
George Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane's absent. Steve Schreiber?
Aye.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Kathy Shane is absent. Shalene Baumill?
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer?
Aye.
It's unanimous for all of us here, 10, 0, 0, and 3 absent. We're moving on to the final item with regard to this election. And I'm going to ask that this item also be put on the screen while Sue talks about the particular item. And this is the policy regarding electioneering during early and absentee voting for all elections, as recommended and approved by the town clerk and town manager. And what you see here is, "No poster, card, handbill, placard, picture, or circulate, circular intended to influence the action of the voter, other than those expressly authorized by Mass. General Law, Chapter 54, Paragraph 65, shall be posted, exhibited, circulated, or distributed in the town clerk's office in the building where the town clerk's office is located, on the walls thereof, on the premises on which the town offices at Fort Boltwood Avenue stand, and within 150 feet of either of the building entrance doors. No person shall collect signatures upon petitions, referendum petitions, or nomination papers within 150 feet of the building entrance door to a polling place." Are there questions from the count? I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Okay, and do you have a question, Andy?
Yes. The, in the past, there has been a business that is, I believe, within the distance that we're talking about of the Boltwood, or, excuse me, of the Main Street door to Town Hall, that has at times had posters for one candidate or another, or a position, in the window of the business on an ongoing basis prior to election. And so I was wondering what steps that are planned to assure that businesses within 150 feet of the either entrance are notified of this rule?
Yes, that's a good question. What I'd like to do, we, we have the COVID ambassadors still on the books, they're working, I guess, until the end of December, and I'd like to utilize them for control, basically. You know, we would have to determine, early voting is starting on the Monday. I think, I'm going to coordinate this with Captain Ting, but, or Sergeant, yeah, Captain Ting, but if we were to go to the businesses at 8:00 in the morning, take a look and see what we could find, and ask them to take them down, because it is a voting site, I think that's how we'll handle it, either that or the Friday before, probably better on the Friday before. But that's what I would like to do, you use, is utilize the COVID ambassadors, they'll be our enforcement officers, they'll stand like constables for early voting. This is all brand new, and, you know, we have this protection on Election Day, we have constables in our polling places, and we have this statute 5465 that prohibits the 150-foot rule, but we've never done this before for early voting or absentee voting. And, you know, in light of the popularity of the early voting, the voters that come in shouldn't, shouldn't have to walk through any kind of solicitation, so that was the reasoning behind having something in place. But I think, yeah, I would like to work with the ambassadors and the, and the police in, in notifying the businesses ahead of time, basically.
Okay. Alyssa, you have a question, and then I have a question, unless you ask it, so go ahead.
It's not actually a question, it's a comment, which is that this is codifying what has always been true. This is for, for the people watching, or for people on the town council who might not be aware, this is not a new made-up thing with amorous variations or anything, this is just the reality then being applied to early and absentee voting, but it was always true for actual in-person voting. I just don't think it was ever in for, it was never said that it applied to absentee voting, because the example that Andy just gave. But now we're just, to me, this is just clarifying the rules of the road and making it consistent from one kind of election period to another kind of election period. And I, I assume Sue would agree with that, but if I got something wrong there, that'd be great to know.
No, absolutely, that's what I was, that's exactly what I was just trying to say. You said it much better, thank you, yes. Again, we've never had anything in place for the early or the absentee, like we do on Election Day, so this puts things in place, the same, same rules that apply to Election Day.
So Sue, this is a nuance, but when are absentee ballots available?
So, we have to wait until we pull names. So October 1st at 9:00, I'll be pulling names for the ballot order, then it goes to our vendor, and it usually takes them a couple of days to make up the ballot, they'll send it to me for proofing, I'll send it back and approve it, and then usually ballots are delivered, and it only takes a couple of days for delivery, so I'm hoping the day after Columbus Day, indigenous people that, yeah, so the week of the 12th.
So it seems to me that based on this rule, that any merchants within 150 feet should not be posting from the day ballots are available even for absentee?
That's right. That actually, that's a good point, yes, yeah, we'll have to be talking to them sooner.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions or comments on this particular item? Hearing none, the motion's been made and seconded. I'm going to move to a vote. I'm going to start with myself, aye. Mandy Johanneke?
Aye.
Dorothy Pam?
Yes.
Evan Ross?
Aye.
George Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane's absent. Steve Schreiber?
Aye.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz is absent, Shalene Baumill?
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer?
Aye.
Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
Darcy Dumont's absent, it is unanimous for those of us here, 10, 0, 0, with 3 absent. Are there any other questions from Sue at this time? Seeing none, I'm going to thank you, Sue, it's busy, oh, I'm sorry, Alyssa?
I was just going to give Sue the opportunity to prompt people that signature papers are due, I believe, tomorrow at 5:00 p.m.?
Yes, they are. Yes.
Okay.
And we, we'll be open till 5:00. Okay.
All right. Are there any other prompts or otherwise comments at this time? Sue, thanks for all your hard work during this busy season.
Thank you. You're welcome.
We're going to move on to an amendment to Town Council Rules of Procedure, Rule 5.2, Public Hearings. This was discussed at a council meeting and then referred to GOL, so I'm going to call upon George. This is a first discussion, because our rules of procedure require that we have two discussions. Depending on the discussion tonight, I may or may not be able to put this on the consent agenda two weeks from now. George?
Thank you, Lynn. If Athena could put, thank you, Athena. And if you could blow that up just a bit. So, as Lynn said, this was referred to GOL. At our last meeting, we voted 4 to 0 with 1 abstention to recommend this change to Rule Procedure 5.2, Public Hearings. Essentially, it's the addition of these two sentences. I don't think this is anything dramatic, in fact, the reason for the abstention was the committee member didn't think it was needed, but we felt that it would just be good simply to make clear that while there are public hearings that are required by MGL, Town Charter, Constable's Procedure, the council may in fact choose to hold a public hearing on any topic it chooses, and the council may designate a council committee to hold a public hearing on its behalf. And I think the other, yeah, so that's really it.
Let's stop with this and see if there's any questions. Alyssa?
So it says in E, "This format shall not apply," and then gives the example of hearings on topics where the council's not responding to a formal petition. So then referring back to the wording that you've added, which is, "may choose to hold a public hearing on any topic it chooses," that means the format doesn't apply to those, right? The format only applies to the ones that are listed specifically, well, that are, it's confusing, I'll just leave it at that. It, it's, you've got an exclusionary statement at the bottom that says, doesn't apply to this, doesn't apply to that, doesn't apply to this other thing, doesn't say what it does apply to, and so I'm, I'm just going to work under the assumption that an extra public hearing is being treated as the kind of thing that falls under the statement, or hearings on topics where the council's not responding to a formal petition. Is that kind of how you guys viewed it?
That's how, that's how I viewed it, yes. That the format shall not apply, yeah, that's how I took it.
Is there any further question or comment? Alyssa, you have your hand up again?
Yeah, I do. So, this is my fault, and I'm hoping George can just tell me why, I'm, you know, just fix my confusion right now. I did not reread the entire set of rules of procedure before I came to the meeting. So we always have this challenge, we had it just the other week at TSO, in terms of the way people throw around the concept of hearing versus forum versus hearing that requires a legal newspaper reference. So what, what does 5.2 mean as a hearing as regards newspaper notices, which always require a lot more effort on our part, because we have to meet a certain deadline that the Gazette wants in order to notice those hearings, versus what the casual person refers to as a public hearing, which is really more of a public forum? So, is it covered in our rules somewhere, that certain hearings with a capital H or a little h need newspaper hearings or not? Because I'm just, I'm wondering if this is an opportunity, we can pass this tonight, but if this is an opportunity to somehow clarify that, or if you think it's already been clarified somewhere else in our rules?
Alyssa, we're not voting tonight. Okay, right, okay.
No, but still, it's a very good question. And in my own mind, though I didn't really press it at the GOL meeting, we do throw the term hearing, at least I throw the term hearing around with some looseness, and it does have a very specific meaning, as we see with this notion of a particular format that's required, except when it's not required. And also, we have the notion that there are certain requirements for certain kinds of public hearings in terms of newspaper notices, but that, I believe, is set by MGL and not by us.
Mandy Jo?
The Charter Commission tried to use the word "hearing" only when it would be required, would require newspaper notices and all, so as George said, with MGL requirements, when the MGL says, "This thing requires a newspaper notice," you know, I, I look at some of this and, you know, that's what we tried, but that doesn't mean we were successful, and I know Alyssa talked us a lot on the Charter Commission. My, my preference would be that only hearings that were, are required, only those notices required under MGL require newspaper notice, whether or not we call other things hearings or not. So not all hearings would require newspaper notice if we've created the requirement for hearing outside of MGL. Unfortunately, that means there are two different types of quote hearings.
Yeah, I think there's this, this ambiguity, and I think trying to disentangle it might create even more confusion and greater change to our rules of procedure. Maybe the other, my other colleagues can weigh in on what they think, but I think this is just meant to remind us of the powers we have as a council, and some public hearings will have certain requirements and some will not, and, but you can send it back to us and we can try and sort that out. I'm not sure we'll have much more success than we did the first time, but we will certainly try.
I think a brief conversation at GOL to just clarify that before we discuss this next time would be useful.
Okay, and?
And if there's any further changes to include those in. Alyssa, are there further issues?
Yeah, I mean, I wonder if one way to think about that, which you've probably already done, but one of the ways to think about that is, why? Why is this, why did you do this? It's, so you want to be able to say, "We have the power to do something," but maybe it doesn't belong in here. Maybe it's that you need to make it clear that we can hold public forums, or something we want to call a hearing, but doesn't require that news. I mean, you're trying, you, I can't think of an example that's essential to put it in here if it's not going to require a newspaper ad, but I totally appreciate the fact that you want to make it clear that we have the ability to call things, I just.
No, I understand.
This just isn't the spot. But thank you for trying to work it through, because I'm not pretending it's easy to sort these threads out. Thank you.
I think also in the report, I make the, or we, this was something that came from the committee, that however this shakes out, including maybe just leaving it the way it is, which is what one committee member said, just don't do anything, that it would perhaps be appropriate for us to have a notice of the fact that CRC holds certain public hearings on behalf of the council, and TS whole, TSO holds certain public meetings on behalf of the council, either on the council website and/or on the TSO and CRC websites, simply for the sake of the public, so that they know that that's what's going on, they're not going to read our rules of procedure, it's not referenced there anyway. So that, I thought, was an excellent suggestion, it's in the report, but what I'm hearing clearly is that we need to go back one more time and see if we can come up with something clearer in terms of the term of public hearing, and if we can, we'll bring it back to you, if we can't, perhaps we will simply let this stand without any change.
Okay. Any further comment before we move on to the next item? Seeing none, we are going to then go on to another item we've referred to GOL, and that is the Town Council Policy on Making Recommendations for Town Council Appointments to Multiple Member Bodies. Again, this is a first discussion, we will not be voting tonight, it's an opportunity to ask questions just like we did. So I'm going to call again on George.
Again, thank you, Lynn. I first like to thank my committee, we worked on this a very long time, much longer, I think, than any of us expected, or I think any of us really wanted. And so I just want to thank them for that. This was basically generated by the fact that we have two different council committees who make recommendations on various bodies that we appoint, namely Planning Board, ZBA, and Finance, and they follow slightly different procedures, and it was felt, as I state in the report, that it actually would be a good idea, for the sake of the council, for the sake of the public, and for the sake of people who are applying, that there be a consistent, single policy governed by, and a set of procedures, that everyone knows what they are. And so that's what we set out to do, and we use the OCA process as our guide, and in many cases, we followed it fairly closely, in some cases, we did not. In the report, which you have hopefully had a chance to look at, I simply break, go through each section, section by section, and highlight those places where, where I think it's, it's important to note, either changes, or just make sure you see that this is what we're recommending, and in cases where there was disagreement amongst the committee, I tried to highlight in those sections where there was differences of opinion. And so what I'd like to do, just very briefly, is just highlight a couple of things and then just open it up to questions, because I think that would be the most fruitful. But in terms of recommendations we're making that are perhaps a little different than what we have been doing, or at least some committees have been doing when they make recommendations, we're recommending that when a vacancy notice is put out, that everyone be required to submit a CAF, also, that includes people seeking reappointment. And the argument for that, right now, the, the practice is essentially simply for the, the chair. And the argument for that, right now, the practice is essentially simply for the chair or their designee to go back and, and find any CAFs that have, over a certain period. I think right now it's three years, we're going to recommend it be two years. And, but not insist that they submit a second CAF. And what we're recommending is that everyone submit a CAF. So once they're notified, they're told that please take a moment, it doesn't take long to submit it. The rationale or the argument for this is that it just alerts counselors as to who's in the applicant pool. So insofar as you pay attention when these come across your email door, you know, we got one just today, as a matter of fact. But right now, so the point is that during the period in which the vacancy notice is up, these CAFs will come in and counselors will be able to see who is applying. And so we're recommending that CAFs be required of everyone rather than simply allowing some to use their old CAF. The second thing, as I just said, is that we are recommending that just be a two-year period rather than three years. The experience of, of the two chairs who happen to also be on GOL is that when you're going back past two years, you really don't get any responses at all. It, it just seems to waste a lot of time for the, the chair or the designee. And two years seems like a reasonable period. So the thought was that the chair or the designee would go back two years from the time of the vacancy notice, and anyone who's expressed an interest in that position would be notified. But beyond that, we would not go past the two-year period. Right now it's three years. So those are the changes for CAFs that we're recommending. Reappointments. This is the period, the section that I think, as I say in my report, generated the most discussion, and we came back to it, I think, more than a few times. And so what we're suggesting here is that yes, there should be a clear stated preference for those who are seeking reappointment if they're seeking a term that would not extend beyond a six-year consecutive period. If it goes beyond that, then the preference would be to seek a new applicants. But the recommended policy, as you will see when you read it, if you have not read it, also makes it clear that, that every opening is treated as a vacant position. And those seeking reappointment will have their current service and experience on the body considered. So we felt that yes, stating a preference is, is important and does mean something. But there's no such thing as guarantee. And as the policy that we recommend states, the recommending committee is not under any obligation to recommend someone, to offer, excuse me, reappointment. And of course, the person is not under any obligation to seek reappointment. So that is the language at the moment that exists. And if you have questions or concerns about that, one member did, and you can read their comment in the report. As I understood it, and as I stated in the report, the argument seemed to be that basically preference should be taken in a very strong sense, and that essentially someone should be guaranteed having reappointment. Statement of interest, we found, and we recommend that this be something that become a regular practice. I think both GOL and CRC have found the using of the SOIs to be extremely valuable tool, unlike relying on the CAFs, which now essentially are simply, basically just simply a notification of interest. There's no place on the CF for people to, to speak about their, their background or such. So the SOIs are being recommended, and we've had good experience with them. I'm sure my colleagues can speak to that, how they feel about it. So we're recommending that. And just a small point of procedure that, at least in what we're recommending, the applicant pool doesn't officially close until the SOIs are actually posted publicly, along with the names of the candidates. The applicant pool does not close just when the chair sets the deadline for SOIs. That shouldn't be very much of a difference of time, but we felt that that little bit of breathing space could sometimes prove useful. So just noting that procedural point. Another area, the interviews and interview questions that, here's an example where GOL procedure was very different from some other committees, particularly CRC. And so we've agreed, at least in what we're proposing, is that interview questions be agreed upon in advance. They be submitted to the individuals being interviewed in advance. And only those questions will be asked during the interview process. There will not be follow-ups, and there will not be second questions. So again, one member felt strongly that that, that they should have the right to ask a second or follow-up question. And their rationale is provided in the report, if you wish to read it. The vote was three to zero with two absent. I then polled the two absent members, and one would have voted yes, and one would have voted no. And that's pretty much the highlights and questions.
Are there questions of George or the rest of the committee? Andy.
Yeah, I have one question, since it's not a topic that was discussed in your report. Under, in section number nine, you provide that any applicant unable to attend the interview should not be considered for appointment. And that struck me as being fairly stringent, given that people may have all sorts of reasons from a personal crisis within their lives, the life of a family, or some other good reason, I won't bother to enumerate them now. And to not allow the committee the opportunity upon request from the applicant to reschedule the interview strikes me as the possibility of being both unfair to some applicant and possibly causing the loss of somebody as an applicant who might have otherwise been a very good person to consider.
Well, Andy, I think that's an excellent observation. I think the thought, and my colleagues from GOL can speak up here as well, but I think there was a couple of factors involved in making it that strict. One was simply to have a level playing field, to have everybody present. It didn't seem to be, you know, to ask that. I think also the thought was that, you know, yes, there can be unusual circumstances that could prevent somebody from being there that through no fault of their own. But trying to make a policy out of that, and also trying to keep a level playing field. One of the, the main arguments that finally won me over, because I was certainly someone who felt that we should be able to ask follow-up questions, and there should be a more natural kind of interview process, was the argument that we're trying to create a level playing field here. And so if you have somebody who, for ever, reasons I'm sure will be very legitimate, but they will not be present when the other members are present for the interview and get to have their own interview at a special time and place. It will be public, of course, but it will be just them. So those are the kinds of things, we're trying to weigh them. And I, I agree that there's a certain draconian quality to this. But on the other hand, the thought was that this is important. And if, if misfortune strikes and you just can't be there, you'll have other opportunities. And, but I don't know how others feel, but that was, you know, the kind of thinking that was lying behind making this sort of, you must be for the interview. I mean, we'll, we'll try to be helpful with the SOI if somebody misses the last, you know, there's a little day or two where maybe you could, you could, you know, get something in. But the interview, we felt, should, should be the day you should show up. And if you can't, that's unfortunate, but we can't, you know, deal with every misfortune in the world. And perhaps you can apply for a different time.
I just want to, before I go on to Steve, I want to just make the opportunity, take the opportunity to make sure people understand this is only for town council appointments. It is not for town manager appointments, okay? Steve.
Normally I would agree with Andy, but I think that now, now I agree with George. You know, I, I, I think that everything that we do needs to be looked at through the equity lens. So are we putting up a rule that may cause a decrease in the diversity of those that apply and are accepted? So I think in this particular case, where we're looking at a town position, so basically the town of Amherst is where the pool of applicants come from, which is a very, it's not like a position where people from around the world can be applying or from around the country. They have to be residents of Amherst to be applying for these positions. I think that the interview draconian measure is, is, is the right way to go. And as Counselor Ryan said, there is a second chance, you know, there are second chances many times, like another round of interviews at some other date. So I support it as written for the reason that it's a very contained pool of applicants.
Are there other comments, questions at this time? Alyssa.
So it, it's probably really obvious that I'm thrilled that GOL is going back to recapture the best of OCA, the very best work that we did, and with some, some nuances that, that have also been improved since then, like the two years or three years issue. Of course, the three years was based on the fact that we used to have three-year terms for elected office in Amherst and three-year terms for most of the appointed bodies. But now, since so much is two years, makes total sense. And I, I appreciate the consistency that, that you've applied through here, even though sometimes it feels like that maybe isn't as flexible as it might be. One of the things I want to point out that's not, I checked, and I don't think it's written in here, but I think has been the practice that the town council committees would continue to follow, and maybe somebody wants to put it in writing and maybe not, is that it has been our practice in the past when we've been scheduling interviews to say, oh, so here are the seven people who want to do this. Here's when we can do it, these are the options of when we can do it. Let's offer these seven people, you know, we're saying these are the possible times. So it isn't that we're picking a date out of the air, and they're just going to all have to show up for that. It's that there has always been some attempt to ensure that they can all be there. And then, of course, things can go wrong and people can't show up. But I think that's actually been one of our strengths in the past, is that we have attempted to schedule when we know that, at least as of current circumstances, people can all be there. I think that makes a big difference, right? Than it, as opposed to some corporation that just says, you know, meetings are, these interviews are Thursday at 1:00, like it or lump it. There's a, there's more flexibility there. So maybe George can speak to that, because I think that's been our practice consistently, and I'm assuming it would continue to be. And the other thing I just wanted to ask a question about is I think it was purposeful in here to not make it 100% clear if interviews would be group interviews or individual interviews, which I believe then leaves that option up to the council committee, which I guess I can live with. But I just wanted to be clear if somebody thought it actually said specifically that they were group interviews, because I don't think it specifically says that.
George.
It does not say that, and so that is left really to be decided by the, by the committee. If people aren't happy with that, I guess we could, we could define it precisely. So it, it doesn't make that clear. I think, you know, we certainly, it is, I, I mean, obviously chairs and designees try to be humane. I mean, we, we will make every effort. If somebody says, look, I worked during the day, and there's no way I can make a day interview, and your committee meets during the day. I think, I, I don't see how you can put this in a rule, but I think it would be just totally inappropriate for the committee to say, well, too bad. I think they would make every effort to see if they could arrange for an evening interview for everyone. If they can't, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. But, so yes, flexibility is something that we certainly strive to, to realize. But I don't see how you can put that into a, a policy or procedure document, because, so.
Steve, you still have your hand up, but I'm going to go on to Evan.
Yeah, two, so two things. One, Alyssa already sort of addressed, which is I was hope, I was confused by the absence of stating that these would be group interviews. I know my preference is to see that stated here because I'm a little bit uncomfortable with individual committees deciding whether they're going to interview group or individuals. OCA, as most of GOL knows, because most of GOL served on OCA, had a very long conversation about the value of individual versus group, and had real reasons for choosing to do group interviews. And since then, we have done multiple rounds of that for the Planning Board and ZBA. And I think we have really benefited from having those group interviews. So that was one thing. The second thing I wanted to say is just in response to the report, and one of the quotes that was put in the report, which is in section two on CAFs, there's a quote from an unnamed member that said, "As in Northampton and other communities, CAFs should be considered public records and be available to the public upon application. The public should be able to see the full pool of applicants early in the process." I'm getting, I haven't had to do this in a while, but I was getting for a while very tired of correcting that blatantly false statement. And so I want to do that again and say, CAFs are not available to the public upon application in Northampton. In Northampton, the only CAFs that are available to the public are the CAFs of the people who the mayor has chosen to appoint to committees. The public in Northampton never sees the pool of applicants. They only ever see the CAFs of those people who the mayor decides he's going to recommend for appointment that then go before the council. And so to say that all CAFs are public and that the public sees CAFs early in the process in Northampton is a false statement. And I want to reiterate that the OCA process that has been the basis of this is far more transparent than any other Massachusetts community that I looked at. And as OCA Chair, I looked at many communities and how they do appointments. And ours is far more transparent than any other, in part because the council does Planning Board and ZBA appointments, which as we know is very rare. So stop, stop saying that, whoever it is. It is not true.
Thank you, Evan.
Just, as you saw, it was in quotation marks, and it was in the section where I allow, anyway. So thank you, Evan, for making that point. I would really make a plea on behalf of the committee and also myself, that if there are any changes, specific changes you would like to see, that we see if we can get a consensus here this evening quickly, because GOL really does not want to go back to this. We, when we finally voted this three to zero, and the vote, by the way, was three to zero with two absent. And that's not normally the way we proceed. We like to have everybody present, but we were simply burnt out. That was like the third or fourth time we had gone through that document. And in those previous meetings, we'd expected to finish with it, but it's, and so at that point, we simply said, look, we just, the four, the fourth member was present through the entire meeting, but had to leave before the vote. And we decided simply to go ahead with the vote. And then I canvassed the other two, other two members afterwards to get their sense. So please don't send it back to us for further discussion. If you, the point about group interviews is well taken. If we can get a sense tonight, if people feel that that's the best way to go. See, apparently CRC has had good experience with it. And that certainly is weighs heavily for me in favor of it. So we could simply make that change, or at least have that change made before it's presented to you next time for the final reading. But we really don't want to come back and discuss this, if we can avoid it. If you insist, we will do it, but we are burnt out with this.
I actually have to say, I could feel the sweat coming through on the email transmitting this, so.
So do people want a group? I mean, is that something, I'm sorry, Lynn, I'm sorry for interrupting, but I'm wondering.
That's the question, I think, for the group.
Yes, I, I could have done this without it, because I appreciate the way you phrased it so carefully throughout there. But I would prefer, because I believe it has been a town council value of ours, right? From OCA through CRC, we have found that for all the lenses that we try and bring to this, that that seems more of a level playing field than trying to do individual interviews. And so making that clear is not only valuable for us, but on the rare occasion that an applicant's actually going to look at our process, that they can see that that's what they can expect, right? Even before they ever apply or reach out, it's going to be a group interview. And so I think that's valuable to have. If you felt like you could include it, I could also pass it without that and just say that you would bring it back at some day with that fixed in there somewhere.
Are there other people's comments? Shalani?
Yeah, I would support group interviews just because I think it makes it more equitable for people who are being interviewed. They know, you know, who's there. It builds collaboration or camaraderie amongst them. But also, it's just like they know that they were asked the same questions, the same way. They're being treated in the same way. And so I would strongly recommend group, group interviews.
Are there other comments? Yes, Mandy Jo.
I don't have a preference one way or the other, but I think the easiest thing to do, if that is the preference, is to add the word group in front of most of the references to interviews in the interview section. So I just thought I'd make that suggestion for next week, if that is what people want. It's the easiest way to do it.
Are there other comments regarding your preference? I've been involved in both. The fact that we cannot ask follow-on questions. To me, therefore, a group interview is fine. Because the follow-on questions really only fit when you're doing individual interviews. Are there other comments? George, do you feel comfortable with that?
I am. I'm willing. I think Mandy has a good suggestion. I would go through and simply add the word group in every place where interview appears. It seems to be in every, and then present that to the council at the next reading. And we would assume vote, the voted as amended or voted as, I don't know how you want to phrase it, but basically that's what I would do unless someone wants to argue for a individual interview. I mean, obviously, my personal feelings at this point are beside the point. I simply want us to reach consensus. I also think it's important that, as was pointed out just now, that the public, whoever's being interviewed, knows what they're getting into. And right now, the document doesn't say that, and that's not good. So one way or the other, we need to make it clear. This would do it. That's what I'll do unless I hear from somebody that they don't want that.
Are there any other comments? Then we will see this again on the 27th with the suggestion as Mandy Jo has made it. With that, we're going to move on to the audit firm selection. And I'm going to call on the town manager, but then I also want to recognize Pat DeAngelis, who chaired this committee very ably. We, Andy, myself and two other people that Pat will, and Athena and Holly Bowser were on this committee. And we want to thank Pat for her work in chairing this committee and organizing our response. So Paul, I'm going to call on you first.
Thank you. So my job was actually one of the easiest jobs possible because the committee had done all the work of interviewing, soliciting, interviewing and recommending and evaluating the different, the two different proposals. My job was to open the price proposals. So when applicants come in, they give you two envelopes, one with their written proposal and one with the price proposal. The price proposal stays sealed until the committee reviews and evaluates the written proposals. And they ranked them with Melanson being the top choice and CLA being the second choice. When we opened the price proposals, we found that the lowest bidder was Melanson, which was the highest rated applicant. And the, and so that makes it very easy to say, we chose the highest rated, lowest priced proposal to be our auditor for the next five years.
So let me just mention, this is being done in accordance with section 5.8 of the charter. It describes the process for independent audit. This is a council decision. We engage, if you will, the auditor. So I'm going to make, ask Pat if you have anything else you'd like to add to that.
Not really beyond saying that the final factor for us to support Melanson was the interviews that we held with other town finance people in terms of their interactions with the two applicants.
It was a very thorough process. Okay, the motion is to direct the town manager to award and execute a one-year contract with four one-year renewals to Melanson as recommended by the town manager audit recommendation memo to the town council dated September 8th, 2021. Pat, would you like to make a second?
I second it.
Thank you. Are there any questions at this time? And I do want to mention one thing, and that is one condition we did lay out there. Lance knew about this in advance, and that was that they would change the lead auditor so that we are not always having the same person. That's kind of standard procedure when you stay with the same audit firm. Dorothy, question?
I read the report and I understand how you made your decision. I just want to, for the record, state that I do think it's important to use another firm, even though they're going to rotate the lead auditor. And I, I understand one of the, besides price and rating, I think the fact that Melanson Heath was willing to do some in-person work and not just online, I, I, that was, I think, a strong and compelling reason to choose them. But I do believe just as a general matter of principle that firms should not get, have such a long-term, close relationship to the subject of their audit. And so somehow we have to find a broader group. But I understand definitely why this, you chose, made the decision that the, the audit committee made the recommendation that it did.
I do want to say, if that's okay, Lynn.
Please.
We looked at numerous towns and, and when we were interviewing, we interviewed towns that had been using the same auditor for over 15 years. So I, as a former early in my life bookkeeper, I understand the idea of rotate, of changing. But I also think that the idea of rotation, rotating the lead auditor is, is going to protect us in that way.
Andy?
I just want to add to that, that we have a difficult problem as a town or city in Massachusetts in that there really are only two firms that qualify under all of the other procedures for when you're doing this kind of a bidding process. And we saw both firms, it is hard to do rotation in a large way when you have, you can't go out and say, oh, well, next time, let's get five firms in there. It's not going to happen. And so we had to sort of deal with this, with what we had to deal with. And I think we, you know, we did talk with a number of other communities that lead people in other communities in making our assessment. That was a very important part of this. And we did address the question of the rotation as Lynn has described.
Are there any other questions or comments at this time? Seeing none, the motion's been made and seconded. I'm going to begin the vote with Mandy Jo.
Aye.
Dorothy Pam?
Yes.
Evan Ross?
Aye.
George Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Sheen is absent. Steve Schreiber?
Aye.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz absent. Shalani Balmellon?
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer?
Aye.
Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
Dorsey Dumont's absent. Lynn Griesmer is an aye. That is 10 in favor. None opposed, no abstentions, and three absent. Unanimous. Thank you. We are going to, we have one other motion with regard to this item, and it is to dissolve the audit request for proposal ad hoc committee. Pat, is there a second?
I don't know. Yes, I second it.
Okay. Are there any other questions at this time? All right, then I'm going to start with Dorothy Pam?
Yes.
Evan Ross?
Aye.
George Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Sheen's absent. Steve Schreiber?
Aye.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz absent. Shalani Balmellon?
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer?
Aye.
Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
Dumont's absent. Lynn Griesmer's aye. Mandy Jo Hanke?
Aye.
That is also unanimous. We are officially dissolved. We are going to take a five-minute break and we're going to come back for the appointments, of which we have one that we have pulled off of the consent agenda. And we have a few other items, including the town manager's report, and then a couple of items under the council comments. So we'll see you in five minutes. When you come back, please turn your videos on. But make sure at this point you turn them off along with muting. Thank you. We're going to continue with appointments. I just want to say that on behalf of the council, we welcome Reynod L. Harp as our new recreation director. And also, we did vote on the elementary school principal and we did vote being added to the elementary, the Fort River Elementary School Principal being added to the elementary school building committee. And we also voted on the additions to the Community Preservation Act Committee. Mandy Jo, you asked that the African Heritage Reparations Assembly be removed. Would you like to speak to that at this time?
Yes, I just had a couple of questions for the town manager that weren't appropriate for consent agenda. The first questions relate to the memo that said, Paul, that you did not actually sit in on the interviews. And I think, at least in my reading of the memos, that this is the first time you haven't actually sat in on the interviews for the appointments you're making. And so I'm curious why you chose not to sit in on these particular interviews and how that has affected your ability to make appointments, given that it is your appointing authority and not another committee's appointing authority. And then I have a question after that.
Sure. Thank you for that question. So the scheduling, the interviews was a pretty arduous task, given everyone's travel schedule. I'd settled on these, this committee of people to consult in terms of the appointment processes. Barbara Love, Sid Ferrera, and Keisha Dennis. I've served on interview teams with them previously and felt comfortable with their judgment. So when, when it came time to schedule them, we were just sort of up against the wall in terms of trying to get the actual meetings done. And I felt, so, so that was basically just a timing thing. I knew, I know four of the candidates that have been put forward already. So, so I felt comfortable taking the advice of this group. And you're right, it is the first time I have sat in. I usually sit in on every interview. But this came, the interviews were conducted during August, when I think it was the week I was on vacation, actually.
Thank you.
Other question, Mandy Jo?
Yeah, one other question is, we've, your appointment memo has appointments for six of the seven open slots, the one that was designated for reparations for Amherst, and then five of the other six openings. So my question is, did we only receive five applications for the six open slots? Or, or were there enough applications that you could have filled all six spots?
There were more applications than, than seats. And what I'm looking for now and looking at this, the group was looking at the dynamics of the group and the skill sets that everyone needs. And I had this conversation with individual members of the, of the interview team. And we are going to continue to recruit someone from the community who can best fill the kind of role that we think is needed on the, on the committee.
Mandy Jo, further questions?
No further questions. I may have comments after other questions.
Okay, Shalani, you have a question?
Well, it was more of, I guess, yeah, the question is, is are we looking for more candidates to fill that particular position? Or are you going to go to the same pool of existing candidates?
So the, in talking this over with the, the interview team, they understood where I was coming from and the need for a strong person to help balance the committee, I'll say. And in addition to the existing candidates, we, you know, we will review, I will review those names again. And then look at any additional candidates that they, that may come through.
Can we make a comment as well at this time?
Please, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just looking at, you know, it's a very impressive group of people who are going to be doing this very, very important work. And one thing that I noticed is that a lot, I believe all of them, I couldn't make out from the first candidate, but all of them seem to have, to have lived in Amherst for a very long time. And which is a good thing because they bring in their lived experiences, they bring in, you know, the history of Amherst. But then that can also be a downside because they're so invested in the history. And so I don't know what the candidate pool looks like. But if there is a person of color who might be fairly new and is not, who can be more objective in the sense, and that's kind of the balance that I'm hearing you say also is could provide that balanced perspective because they're not invested and in the history of political history.
I welcome that comment. Thank you.
Mandy Jo?
Yes, I guess I would just say I am dismayed that if we had more applicants than spots, that we are leaving a spot open for an indefinite amount of time in a committee that is set to work for less than a year. Especially since there hasn't been any indication that the remaining candidate or candidates, I don't know how many candidates there were for these spots, weren't qualified. And so I'm concerned that we're just not appointing people that might have been qualified. That was a concern of the prior form of government and the prior managers before we switched forms of government. And the lack of transparency and people would submit CAS and then slots would just be left open indefinitely. And so I'm concerned that we had enough applicants. There hasn't been any indication that the applicants we had were not qualified, yet we aren't filling the slot with that initial set.
Well, I can, if I may.
Please.
Lynn, so my intent is to get this before TSO at its next meeting, to act as quickly as possible so the committee can have its full complement of members.
So your intent is to appoint or recommend for appointment or appoint another member by the end of the month?
Right before the next council meeting, before the next TSO meeting.
Okay. Are there any further questions or comments? Alyssa?
Yeah, I just had a couple of things that, one came up at TSO, which was, I think it's really important, given that people have been expressing interest in doing this work since before we passed the chart on June 21st. So sitting with that for a moment, June 21st, we're now appointing members for the first time on September 13th. And there's an October 31st initial deadline inside this charge, which obviously is going to be more along the lines of a report of, we met sometimes and here's how we're structuring our future work. I think it's really important to try and pull their first meeting together now, hearing, which I did not hear at TSO, now hearing that there's the intent to possibly get the final member done before the end of the month. Then I guess I would understand better waiting until the end of the month, but given this is only September 13th, I would think people would be chomping at the bit to get started on this. That doesn't mean we have staff availability to make that happen, but the reality is we have to do that because we said we'd have this committee. So if it turns out from what Paul just said, that there's going to be another member, then I guess I'm not as interested in applying whatever helpful pressure I can provide to have this committee start meeting sooner rather than later. So I'll leave that to the side since it sounds like, it looks like you might be closer on filling that last spot than we necessarily thought when we discussed this last week at TSO. On a completely other note, when that first committee is, meeting is set up, it's become very clear from the conversations that have taken place over the past three years, that as we create new committees, we've not done a stellar job of setting them up for success in the following areas, for example. And I'm talking about committees like ECAC and Community Safety Working Group. And I don't remember how percent for artworks went, so I'm not going to talk about that. But I'm not convinced we're giving new committees, which means a committee that you don't just join, that's already been doing stuff and you read their old minutes and you find out how they do things. Many times we have members who've never served in town government before and have no idea what the municipal requirements are around open meeting law and ethics considerations. They certainly don't know open meeting law under Zoom conditions, right? Because that's a whole nother kettle of fish. And how they're also expected to interact with the town council as time goes forward. That's not been clear to the committees that we've set up in the past, perhaps with the exception of public art, percent for art. So I would just really ask that we do a better job. And when I say we, I guess I mean everyone who isn't me, who's staff, because we as town council don't have any ability to do this. We don't have anybody that we can send to this committee to say, here are the things you need to know. And yet it's clear some of those things were not told to those committee members at the beginning of their service. And those frustrations have continued to boil over a long period of time. So I'm asking that we look at that differently and figure out a better way of onboarding new committees so that they feel like they're ready for success from day one.
Are there any other comments? Mandy Jo?
Just one other. This one's directed to the president. This charge has one or two counselors as liaisons. So I would request after we've made these appointments, that the council president pull the council for liaisons, just like the council president did on the Council of Aging recently.
Thank you, Mandy Jo. I will be glad to do that. It's two counselors. Okay, and I'll do that so that we can bring that up to our next meeting when the other person will be, hopefully also appointed. Dorothy Pam?
Do we have a set meeting time for this committee? I mean, it's hard to volunteer to be a liaison or to be considered as a liaison if you don't know whether you can make the meetings.
So we do not have a set meeting time for this committee. I mean, we will be pulling the current, if the council approves these appointments, we will be pulling them to schedule a meeting, get it on the calendars, at least for these six members. And then can inform the council what that date is. And then that, usually it's the committee that decides its best time to meet.
Of course, yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, Dorothy, please lower, there we go. Then I'm going to read the motion, and that is to approve the following town manager appointments to the African Heritage Reparations Assembly as filed with the town clerk on September 8th, 2021, and recommended by the Town Services and Outreach Committee Report of September 13th, 2021, effective immediately, for terms to expire June 30, 2022. I'm so afraid of mispronouncing. Jamila Jameson, self-identified as African American, Heather Lord, a current or former member of an Amherst elected body, self-identifies as Black Indigenous and White. Alexis Reed, self-identifies as half African American and half European American. Irv Rhodes, current or former member of an Amherst elected body, self-identifies as Black. Amakar Shabaz, current or former member of an Amherst elected body, self-identifies as African. Michelle Miller, representative of reparations for Amherst R4A. Is there a second?
Second, Shalane.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? Seeing none, I'm going to move to a vote. Dorothy Pam?
Yes.
Evan Ross?
Aye.
George Ryan?
Aye.
Shane is absent. Steve Schreiber?
Aye.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Schwartz is absent. Shalane Baumill?
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer?
Aye.
Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
Demont's absent. Lynn Griesmer's aye. Mandy Jo Hanneke?
Aye.
Is unanimous for those of us here, 10:00:03. We are going to go on to town council appointments. No counselor has expressed interest in joining the ECAC committee unless somebody would like to raise their hand at this time and volunteer. In that case, that seat will remain empty until the new charge or the new configuration takes place in 2022. Regarding the liaison to the council on aging, no counselor has volunteered to take on that role unless I see a hand at this time. Then let me just say, as a volunteer, I'm not going to volunteer to be a liaison, but I am going to reach out to the chair of the committee, make sure if there are any particular items she would like to discuss, she or he would like to discuss, and basically make sure that they feel comfortable continuing to be in contact with the council. Okay. Any questions on either of those? And we're going to go on to committee reports. CRC, Mandy Jo?
CRC has been dealing with zoning and has made recommendations on three of the five zoning referrals that it has right now. Those three, two of them are sitting, waiting for attorney review. The other one is waiting for planning board recommendation. And we hope to make a recommendation on the fourth of five tomorrow at our meeting. The fifth is CVS lot rezoning, and that is waiting on some alternate proposals from the sponsors and the planning department. CRC will also be taking up revisions based on council comments to the comprehensive housing policy at tomorrow's meeting. And today, since there is one vacancy and one impending vacancy on the ZBA for associate members, I had Athena post on the bulletin board the announcement announcing those vacancies so we can strike that process to hopefully be able to, be able to fill the vacancy that exists and the impending one that will exist when Sharon Waldman finishes her service, extended service based on the three ZBA hearings that she is sitting on right now.
And Mandy Jo, you see the comprehensive housing policy coming back before the council on the 27th, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Elementary school building committee, Kathy is not here, but Steve, you are. Is there anything you'd like to bring us up to date on? Steve has his camera off.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Sorry about that. We have not met since the last time the council met, so you all know about the delay. I believe the deadline has passed for the RFP, so I'm expecting an update soon as to, you know, what firms have applied. We are meeting next Thursday, I believe, Thursday morning.
Okay, thank you. Finance committee, Andy?
Yes, at the beginning of the meeting, you had given our, the dates of next meetings. And so I just wanted to couple that with what is projected agenda. There's one major item, and that is that there's been a longstanding set of policies and procedures, there's financial management policies and objectives. And some of them are very substantive about budget and some really are more on the management side. But it's a compendium of all of the policies. And that has been proposed for some updating revision to eliminate such irrelevant things like mentions of town meeting select board and add town council and to make some other changes that are appropriate and just to modernize policy. And so part of the meeting is to review that. There may be some discussion about the upcoming process for the budget and how the finance committee wishes to proceed, recognizing that we need a calendar that also acknowledges that this is an election year and a year where there's a changeover in some council that will happen. We don't know, of course, how big is that. That's what the voters will decide. So those are, and then there's a possibility that the fourth quarter budget report for the year that just ended FY '21 will be available for review. And if it is, then it'll be discussed in the committee. So I just wanted to give you a sense of the range of issues that are coming forward.
There's also a vacancy now for a non-voting resident on the finance committee that GOL will be attending to. Is that correct, George?
You just took away my report.
Jeez, I'm so sorry.
Yes, GOL will be, this is actually heads up to Athena as well. She will get a notice from me tomorrow morning. And we will post a vacancy notice for the vacant position. We've had a resignation, so GOL will be getting on that ASAP.
Right. Dorothy, you had your hand up. I'm sorry I missed that.
I was slow at that. I just wanted to take the opportunity to say that I'm very sorry that I have to resign as liaison to the council on aging. I have enjoyed my time there. It's just that it conflicts with classes I'm teaching this semester. And of course, there's a big change with Mary Beth moving on. But I will say that members of the council are interesting, alert, and there's a lot of very important issues that are being discussed. So I hope that people will rethink this and that somebody good will volunteer to be a liaison to that committee. I just can't do that this semester for teaching. Thank you.
I understand. GOL, George?
Yeah, so besides the thin com vacancy, we do expect to be reviewing at least two of the zoning bylaws that are currently out with KP Law. And of course, we're continuing to work on the council referral of bylaws for future consideration.
Okay. Town Services and Outreach Committee, TSO Evan?
Yep, so you have our report. One thing I really tried to do in the report was give the dates that we expect to take up particular issues that I think could be of interest to counselors who do not serve on TSO. Specifically, we're looking at the townwide residential parking policy, which I think we are likely nearing conclusion on, hopefully at our September 30th meeting. And we'll also be looking at the proposed improvements to North Pleasant Street, both those along Kendrick Park and those in North Amherst between Eastman Lane and Pine Street in the fall, including a public hearing on the changes to parking as part of the proposal of North Pleasant Street along Kendrick Park, which we're currently planning for October 14th. So if you haven't taken a look at the report and any of those things interest you and you want to attend as members of the public, then the dates are in the report. Otherwise, nothing else to report.
Okay, and at some point, please let me know when you think there's going to be a, all five of you present at the meeting so that we can officially do an election for chair and vice chair. Okay?
I believe that will be September 30th.
Okay. And the timing of that meeting is five?
That would be 6:30.
6:30, thank you. Okay, any liaison reports at this time? Okay, we've done the consent agenda. We're moving on to the town manager's report. Oh, I'm sorry, there is a hand up. Alyssa?
It's a little bit of a fake report in that I don't have anything that I felt was essential to tell you about BLC, Board of License Commissioners, because Paul covered it in his town manager report. But I did want to mention, and I'm not putting pressure on Dorothy, but I did want to mention that our rules of procedure make it very clear that you don't have to, as a liaison, attend the actual meetings. You can just follow the meetings by them sending you stuff, sending you the minutes, sending you the agendas. We always made that clear in our rules. And so if she's still really excited about sticking with them, she could do that by not going to the committee meetings. But that was, in fact, something we recognized way back in the day, is that not everybody's going to be able to add another meeting to their schedule. It's just a particular affinity that they want to be able to serve that role, even if they can't show up.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to the town manager's report, Paul, highlights?
Thank you. So the quick, two, three quick things. One is, the block party has been canceled. And they canceled that partially because of COVID-19. But also, they recognize that asking restaurants to be staffing a stand outside was also pretty arduous. And they just saw the number of things happening and they felt it was an in-person kind of event that they just felt is better served not to have the block party this year, which is sad for everyone, but that was a decision by the Business Improvement District. Mentioned that the Cultural District has been reapproved for five years by the state. And to just support Steve, the, I believe we had eight companies who had submitted proposals to be the designer for the new elementary school, which is really exciting. That's a huge number of firms who are really interested in this. And our OPM was really impressed by the number and the quality of the companies who are interested. So that's going to be a pretty important decision as to who will be the designer. I want to spend most of the time, though, on talking about COVID, which is predominating most of our activity here in the town for the last week. As you know, the COVID cases, specifically the Delta variant, has been going up in the town. We are at, as of tonight, 302 active cases. Back in June, we were at three. So that's a dramatic increase in the number of cases. In addition to the town mask requirement for public spaces and publics, indoor space, public indoor spaces and public indoor space or indoor spaces open to the public, the town, the Board of Health has strengthened its regulation to require you to wear a mask unless you're seated and eating. The the, and one interesting thing that happened over the weekend, which was a very busy weekend for the town, is a big football game with UMass and Boston College playing. But one of the bars voluntarily closed because they did not want to be seen as being a hotspot for COVID. And that was a very interesting decision by that bar owner. When we talk about vaccines, we, our number, and I tried to explain this in the report, but I'll just summarize it quickly. Our number shows up on the state as about 40%, which is in the lowest 5% five communities in the state, but it's not accurate. And it's not accurate because they do not count the college students who have been vaccinated. And 96% of the college students in Amherst have been vaccinated. The, Steve George from the Board of Health has done an analysis of the numbers. And he basically said, if you'd say the 18 to 24 age range is vaccinated at the same rate as everybody else in the state, then our vaccination rate is in the 76% range. Speaking with the state epidemiologist, because we asked them, could you fix this on your website? And they said, no, we can't. And she basically said, you know, you should actually use, instead of using the state average, you should use your college student average, which is very high. So 76% is a conservative number for the number of people vaccinated. And that, we tried to put that on our website to explain that to people. In addition, our schools, the 12 to 15-year-olds at schools are, 82% of them are vaccinated. Vaccination is obviously important. It reduces the spread of the disease. But also, more importantly, it reduces the severity. Of those 302 cases I mentioned, none have been hospitalized, to our knowledge. And so it, people are feeling crummy, but they're not needing hospitalization, which is really important because I was on a call recently with the CEO from Mercy and Bay State Hospitals. And they were talking about the impact on their operations, both from their staff being exhausted and also their ICU beds filling up. Testing, so community testing is still available. You have to go to the university campus to get the test and then you can submit it. In response to the increase in cases, and the increase in cases are almost all in the 18 to 24 age range. The university has, will be doing targeted testing. They're choosing 500 students in sort of specific areas that they're going to test. And with that information, they may be expanding their testing. These are for vaccinated students who are not required to be tested. With the university, the state epidemiologist has become involved. There's a call this morning with our health director and their health people to review actions by the university. And they, the state epidemiologist felt that this type of increase is happening across college campuses, across the Commonwealth, so it's not unusual. We're not seeing a big increase at Hampshire College or Amherst College. Amherst College has a very aggressive protocol of not only requiring vaccination, but also a surveillance testing of all students have to be tested twice a week. And it's that cadence of testing that we're hoping becomes more prevalent among our institutional partners. So a lot going on. We're managing this and in close contact with the university. The you know, what we're seeing is that most of the cases that are showing up are off-campus students, students who live off-campus, and it tends to concentrate in households. So there, if one member of a household gets it, it becomes prevalent throughout the entire household. And we've discovered that at our schools as well, that it tends to be concentrated in households. It doesn't seem to be moving through classrooms or in sort of more casual connections with people. So that's what my, I'm not the health director, and she's available whenever you would like to meet. And she's, Jen Brown has been doing a tremendous job. So I can ask, try to answer any questions that you have.
Dorothy?
Another comment or question about students back in town. I'm sure you received the emails today about the parking on residential streets. But with this new addition, so Lincoln Avenue people are saying that it's not safe. They can't get out of their get out of their driveways now, that we've learned that and that there are no, that there's not enough parking spaces available for students to, uh, get on, on UMass. That may be because with the installation of the solar panels, they had to reduce the number of cars. I don't know. But we've always assumed to, oh, if you just get those students to get their cars over to the UMass lots, and now we find there's a waiting list. And, uh, it's really a terrible, they're being boxed in. If they're living in some of these new buildings in the no parking overlay district, and then they can't get their cars on the campus lots, we've got a problem. And I just hope that we were working on this before COVID and then we kind of pulled back and, and you know, there was a lot of work done on it. I hope we can get back on it because this is a serious problem.
Steve?
Um, I get, I read that same email and I don't know, is that a fact? Do we know that that is a fact, that there is or no student parking places on the UMass campus? So before anyone answers, and maybe nobody knows the answer to that, I will say that being on campus this weekend, not on the football day on Sunday, um, I've seen cars parked where I've ever seen them parked on the UMass campus, particularly on a weekend. Like the visitor's lot was completely full and I have no idea, you know, why that was. And if that was, you know, overflow, I, I just don't know what it was, but, um, I certainly have not heard any fact that all student parking is sold out.
So I, I have heard the same thing, not from the university, that there's a waiting list for on, on-campus parking. I do know that one of the parking lots off of East Pleasant Street was under construction and they were, they had actually sold the, this, this, um, parking passes up there. So they were looking at alternative arrangements, uh, along Olympia Drive, for instance. Um, so I think that they recognize that there's a challenge for parking. Um, and this weekend, I assume that there were visitors and, you know, from Boston College were visiting other students.
Alyssa?
I appreciate those questions. And I think that one of the things that's worth pointing out is it's not, it's certainly not the first time there's a waiting list. There have been waiting lists for particular lots, less expensive lots, for example, rather than more expensive lots. It may be a fact. I have no reason to question the writer. I assume they would have checked their facts before they wrote to us. But I do think that what's important about that and, and, you know, maybe the overflow of the football game. And then of course, there was a parking lot where there is now going to be a Newman Center, as Paul indicated. So obviously that changes everything. Whether they didn't plan for that appropriately or not, obviously we can't say because we aren't there. But I do think it's an important point that in our relationship with UMass, that they tell us about things like that in, in that way, right? Rather than just saying, well, we figured you saw that we took out the parking lot to put the Newman Center, is to say, oh, guess what? Our parking space population has now gone from X thousand to X thousand because we took out those parking spaces. But here's what we're doing to work on that. That just feels to me like something they should automatically tell us because we have, obviously we have constraints too. And that would be much more informative to us rather than having to hear it on a onesie-twosie basis from people who, who then have to go and try and hunt down that information. So I would hope that's something that external relations would think it was worth reporting to us about and could also then answer this individual's question that wrote to us about it, to say if, other than that, if there was any other difference, because you know, obviously there can be ebbs and flows and whatever reason students might be bringing more cars. And it's, it feels like we should be getting informed about that on a regular basis as part of our partnership.
Okay, uh, Shalani?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to actually highlight the free testing kits that are available at UMass. I don't know if everyone knows about them and that it's easy to pick up from and get access to. Uh, my question to Paul was about, um, the police department. And I know the police is under a lot of stress right now with students coming back and you're hiring. Um, I just wanted to ask if there is any effort or any way that we can try and recruit, um, people of color in the police department?
Um, so yes, that's always a high priority. Our last hire was a person of color. Um, so, um, and was a priority for, it's a major recruitment effort by the, by the department. Uh, this is a person who was academy trained, uh, had worked at, uh, UMass, uh, at the UMass Medical School in Worcester and was always admired the Amherst Police Department. So a, a long effort to recruit him and engage him and, uh, and he has, you know, he's been appointed. So, and it's a good thing for him is that there, you know, he does go through the normal training period, but he doesn't need to go to the academy, which is usually a big, big piece for us. Uh, and along the same lines, we sworn two new firefighters this morning, which is really exciting. Um, so to, to, um, you know, again, that, that department, we're, it's, it's struggling because there's a lot of, um, uh, injuries and, um, uh, personal leaves that are, that are hampering the fire department. So we're keeping the four additional firefighters on for an extended period of time. Uh, it's, it's just, it's really busy though, I have to say, for both police and fire. Um, it's just a pretty, uh, very busy time of year for them all, um, especially on the weekends. Um, so, um, yeah, so on that.
Uh, just a follow-up question. Are you hiring any part-time people in the police department at this point?
No, typically we hire just full-time people.
Okay. Uh, can you also just quickly give us an update of the new houseless task force for houseless people?
Yeah, so, um, uh, Mary Beth was supposed to be pulling that together before she left and she had committed to doing that. Um, and, uh, I'm hoping that she'll still pull that together because she had done, done a complete, had completed some work on that. So, uh, hopefully we'll get that to you in very near future. I double check with her on that.
Andy?
Thank you.
I, I'm sorry, was that, was that it, Shalani? Okay, Andy?
Back to the prior conversation, I just wanted to tell you that if you go to, um, wwwumasedu/transportation/parking, at the top of the page, it says highlighted in yellow, parking permits for fall 2021 sold out exclamation mark.
Thank you. Pat?
I don't have a, a UMass parking questions, but I have a couple of questions for Paul, but I can wait if there are still people who want to talk about either COVID or parking.
I think you should go ahead.
Okay, um, I have, uh, three questions. Um, and you mentioned in your report, the fact that we've lost several, uh, department people and they've been really important losses. Uh, and you said that you're going to be investigating po- possible patterns and things like that. And so I'm very, um, interested in whether you're going to go back and also investigate why we lost Siobhan Martin, uh, and why we lost Evelyn Rivera Rifkinberg, uh, because we lost two very, uh, highly intelligent, highly committed people of color. And I think we need to look at ourselves around that.
So I agree, Pat, uh, and that's one of the reasons we brought this up and we, you know, that, that was, uh, you know, a glaring worry for me. And so we did meet with, I did meet with the Personnel Board on Wednesday with the Human, uh, Resources Director. Um, and sort of we reviewed like, you know, what we're seeing and some of it, while each individual person has a reason for leaving, we also wanted to look into, are there some underlying patterns? Uh, is it, is it, uh, a culture thing? Is it a leadership thing? Is it, what is happening? So our HR director does do, um, exit interviews for every person. But then, uh, we've also, especially for those two members that you mentioned, we did a subsequent, you know, several months later kind of interview, um, by a third party, um, to say, what, is there anything else you can help us learn from your experience with the town of Amherst? And, um, you know, and so, and that's stuff that, that is, you know, is going through HR as opposed to keeping it separate from where I am right now, because we want them to be as honest as possible. Um, so that is, and one of the things that we've come up with is that we want to continue, we'll, while we do exit interviews, we also want to do stay interviews. So people who've been here for a while and then decide to stay, what attracts them? Uh, one of the things from those interviews was the lack of support when someone comes in. So department heads are expected to do a lot of work and they get handed the keys to their department, say, go. And I think it becomes overwhelming very quickly because we're a very high demand town. And that was the experience for some, some of our folks. So one of the solutions, a couple of the solutions for that, one was to, that, um, to put a support team, a mentor-type program or a group of people who will assertively be meeting with the department heads, uh, speci- specifically department heads, but could be any employee. So they begin to build some relationships, uh, instead of just at department head meetings or something like that. So they, you know, they might say, one of my employees asked me to do this and I'm really sure if that's like normal or if they're trying to play me, you know, it's like somebody they can consult with that's outside of their line of, of reporting, they can ask safely. Um, and I think, you know, um, Rebecca Woodland, well, we're really blessed to have a really powerful, um, Personnel Board. Um, you know, Tony Butterfield is an expert on organizational development and Rebecca Woodland, um, had really, she says, I do this for a living. She's a professor at UMass as well, and she works at the school department. And she offered some really good, uh, um, techniques for, um, helping people navigate complex situations in a supportive atmosphere, um, that we have not used. And so we're eager to do that. Um, so she called it internal consultancy and, uh, she sent, after the meeting last Wednesday, she sent some articles that I have not had a chance to read. But, you know, it's something we're, and, and our, you know, just to be honest, the, our HR director is, is relatively new as well. And so she's sort of an, uh, a case that she can self-monitor how she's feeling in, in the stress that she's gone through in a pretty difficult period of time. So, yeah, alert to that. Um, trying to make sure that people are able to say what they need to say in a safe place. Um, you know, I'm all ears on things that I can do better. Um, one of the things that has been, uh, challenging is the number, that has been identified as a number of direct reports I have, um, which is, um, makes it harder to give the, the kind of time to every individual. Um, and trying to work through what that organizationally, what does that mean for our town as well?
Thank you for those things. I have a couple more. Uh, thank you very much on that, Mr. Paul. Um, the East Street Belcher Town Road, um, RFP, uh, I'm very curious because I remember when we were talking about East Street School, when whether we were going to renovate it or include it in an RFP, this was a year or so ago. The building, it sounded like there was asbestos in the building and maintain, retaining the building as part of any development was going to impact, um, possibly a developer wanting to come in. So I'm very curious, the Housing Trust did not include retaining that building in their RF version of the RFP. So I'm curious about why it got put in the, uh, RFP that's gone out or is going out.
Sure. So it's an, it's an historic district. It's a historic, it's a, it's a historic structure. Um, it's an important, um, building and, you know, if, and in terms of moving forward on an RFP, not having to seek a demolition, um, permit for that building, uh, which would bring a lot of controversy, would move us forward quicker. We may find that there's no vendor, no bidder who wants to, to try to save that building, in which case we can revise that. But the decision, um, we made was that it was best to sit, move forward saying, let's preserve the, you know, historic building if we can. If not, then we can re-figure that.
I just would hate to have us lose the opportunity because no one comes forward and to delay again, the starting of a, an affordable housing project.
So we're not sensing that. We think that there's a fair amount of interest in this for a couple, from a couple pretty important, um, bidders.
Good.
But we'll know in a few weeks.
Um, oh, good, good. The other thing is, doesn't have anything to do with your report, but does have to do with my work and Mandy's work. Uh, we have, uh, worked on, um, a surveillance bylaw that has gone through various committees, uh, and it was sent, uh, to KP Law ages ago. We're not getting anything back. And, uh, that has a consistent problem with that law firm. But I have a suggestion that would help me, which I'm, I, you send that on, you send the letters on to KP, you know, the information on to KP Law. As a counselor, I would like to have, when you send out, um, a bylaw that I'm sponsoring, I, and I would like this for any sponsor, for any bylaw, that we see the correspondence that goes back and forth between you and KP Law, so that we have a more current sense of what's going on. Uh, and that would be very helpful.
Yeah, that, yeah, I can certainly, when I send that out, I can certainly send it. It actually does, it's a good check to make sure I sent the right thing, because there's so many different iterations of this thing. But, and I'll follow up with the surveillance thing for you.
Yeah, and that would be very good. Thank you very much, Paul.
Thank you. Uh, Dorothy?
Uh, just wondering, uh, Paul, um, just remember where you are. Okay, there you are. Um, if you've ever considered the idea and then the implementation of some kind of housing bonus for town workers. Um, I mean, if we, we understand that Amherst is a hard place to work. It's also a place where people get hired from, because it's understood that they must be pretty good if they have survived Amherst, um, and are, are still alive. But, so if there were some kind of housing bonus, this could give an added reason for people to stick through the hard times. Um, and I, I just think it would be good because I know that in the past, you told, you talked about so many workers recently retiring after 30 and 40 years. So, and I don't know if they lived in the town of Amherst or in some of our, you know, bedroom communities. Um, so longevity has been here. It isn't now, and I know that we're having a, a, a housing problem. Now I'm just wondering if there's a connection.
So housing prices in Amherst, as anybody can attest, are, are very high. Um, and typically that excludes most municipal workers from being able to purchase a house here. Um, our catchment area for recruiting is pretty broad because, um, we are a, a community of choice, uh, employer of choice. We try to be that way at least. And so people will come here from working in other communities. They tend not to live here. Uh, oftentimes people, um, I talked with a firefighter today who is, and who said that he likes the community. He lives in, he doesn't want to disrupt his family because for firefighters and police officers, we do have some language and about proximity to town so they can respond in case of emergencies. Um, we have found that many people will travel a fair distance to, um, to, to be, to take a job for the town of Amherst. Um, if we offered a housing bonus, I don't think it would make, we'd have to have so much money to be, help people be able to afford to buy houses in Amherst. I don't know if that's, um, would really be benefic- as beneficial as we would hope. But we would love to have more, I mean, I'm just thinking about it, like on, on the mezzanine, every employee who's here does live in the town of Amherst, but that's unusual. Most places, it's not that way.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions at this time for the Town Manager? Okay, then seeing none. Uh, we're going to go on to the Town Council comments and I want to start with a couple of things. In your packet today, uh, is an updated item of something I actually had in the packet as of Thursday, and it's future agenda items. I have, I developed this, and it's, it's a running list and it's a work in progress. So whatever it says today can change tomorrow. And all of you know that because mu- many of the items there come from your committees. Um, I did do this by developing a list, by sharing it with the chairs of each of the committees, with Athena and Paul, and then came back with revision on it. Um, I, I want to draw attention to this one in particular, however, because this begins to give you a sense of everything we need to get done before our term is up. And it's daunting. It's, we will not, this will be the last meeting that ends around nine o'clock for a while. Um, at least I, that's my prediction. I hope it's wrong. Um, I do want to mention a couple things particularly, and that is next meeting, we will be doing, having another discussion, another decision point about whether or not we meet in-person slash hybrid or ver- totally virtual. However, because we had to, um, advertise the tax classification hearing, it does have a Zoom link. But if we ma- and that's on October 4th. But if we meet in-person, there will still be a Zoom, the same Zoom link anyway, because of the hybrid mode. So we were able to accommodate advertising that hearing as required by law without, uh, compromising the council's ability to make that decision at our without compromising the council's ability to make that decision at our next meeting. And you heard earlier tonight that because of the importance of the districting advisory board and their work and the fact that we have to approve our redistricting plan by the end of October, I'm going to be calling you to see if we can pull together a quorum for October 25th. The Community Safety Working Group has also asked, since they are completing their term by the end of October, if they could also present that night if we meet. And so if you have any comments on that, on that or the other items in the future agenda items or anything else, please speak up. That's all I have to say at this point. Comments? Alyssa.
I know it must be really obvious to you and to the committee chairs, but it's not at all obvious to me on many of these items where they are in committee. And so when it says something's first reading for a future time, it's not always clear when you go back. Okay, well, when is it coming out of committee, et cetera, et cetera? I mean, I realize this is a really long and daunting list, as you said. So I know that that's a pain to try and add that in, but it's almost like a spreadsheet, like who's responsible when, kind of thing, in order for all these things to, to play out exactly as we're hoping for. So thanks for any time that you can stick in, you know, TSO is going to act on this such and such date. That's why we can do it this other time.
That's, thank you. I will do that. Are there other comments, Alyssa? Any other comments? Are there any other particular counselor comments on anything else? And we're about to set another record. Any other comments? If not, the meeting is adjourned at 8:48. I don't remember the last time. Thank you.